Right for a Newcastle guy.
Did you hear that?
No.
He said, you're okay for a Sunderland fan. Okay. I will take a break for a minute and I will be back.
So yeah, it's a zoom, it's got zoom.
Hey, Robert, I can either stay uh blank or I can uh go to my iPad.
What's the issue?
Uh my camera is not working on my computer.
You sure it's your camera?
Yeah, I can, I can, if if you need to see my face, I can go on my iPad and use that one.
Yeah, I mean, can you see us? Like if I share the screen?
Oh, I see you guys great.
I mean, it's fine. We can hear you fine.
Yeah, and just as possibility, I mean, as far as zoom, if you go down to the bottom of the screen or wherever your icon is on yours that says the video on it, there's a little carrot screen to the little carrot to the right. If you click on that, you can pick what your video sources are. So your camera sources, make sure.
Yeah, it's right next to the mute button. So it says mute, stop video.
Yeah.
Yeah, click on that little carrot next to the stop video.
Yes, it's face, I got FaceTime HD video settings, maybe.
Well, you should be able to check whatever camera you're using on that device. You should have a check mark next to one of those sources.
It says select a camera. Does yours give you select the camera?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm um.
Oh, there you go.
That was my my Vance part. It says FaceTime HD camera built in, so.
You want to make sure it's clicked.
Got it select. Let's see if I. So that one's selected. Choose virtual background.
I think when you select it, it's giving that icon. We we can see the word Vance when you hit that.
Yeah, when I hit that one, that's my.
I don't understand it's.
Do you do you have a little slider that goes over your camera, Vance?
No, it's a it's a desktop.
If you go back, if you go in there and you go to video settings and then you click this general click and then click video, the very first thing it asks for your camera and you should drop down like mine says integrated webcam. So if you can.
Mine just has one, just FaceTime HD camera built in.
Hmm.
There's no reason it shouldn't be working.
Robert, give me the heads up before we go live, will you?
We are.
Okay, we're live.
Yes.
You want to give Vance another minute?
He can hear, he can hear us. He just, he's not able to get news.
Yeah, I hear Dale. You just can't see me, that's all.
I I hear that all the time. All right, we want to get started?
Yeah, I just texted Mike Thomas. But um in the interest of time, we can get started.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. All right, I'll go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome everybody to the City of Maitland City Council Workshop for August 3rd, 2020. This workshop is now being called to order. Please note this workshop is being held through video and audio conferencing technology. Now, city clerk, Ms. City Clerk, will you please take a roll call of attendance to be sure all are present to ensure all council members can hear and be heard?
Okay, thank you. Councilman Thomas. Councilman Wild.
Here.
Councilwoman Guthrie.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall Harrison.
Here.
Mayor McDonald.
Here. Okay, now, in addition to the city council, we have city manager Sharon Anselmo and assistant city manager Mark Ragantine with us. And uh Robert Sargent will keep us all straight and Ms. Maria will as well. All right, Ms. City Manager.
Just a little disclosure here, um mayor and council and those who are watching or listening to the workshop. Uh as you're aware, the governor has extended his executive order 2069 through October, waiving the requirement for an in-person quorum. So a council member uh must not need not be present for a quorum. Um as long as sunshine law requirements can be met, this workshop is being recorded. We do not have public comment tonight. Typically, on your workshops, we do not take public comments, just a workshop. Um and it is being recorded and sent out on YouTube.
All right, very good. Let's go ahead and get to our first agenda item. Ms. Sharon, you want to jump right in?
Sure, let me just uh share my screen. And hopefully you can, you can all see that.
Yeah.
Um hey, and and Robert, if you could resend uh Councilman Thomas the login info, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I just sent it a few minutes ago. I'll do it again.
Okay, all right. Um so this is the Stormwater Fund Waste, uh Water and Sewer and Solid Waste Fund Workshops. We we did have the C R A listed, but we did that at the General Fund Workshop. So unless you had questions, I wasn't going to go. It's pretty simple. It's it's millage and debt service, so um we don't have any projects in there. Um. Let me see, there we go. So just to go over tonight's agenda, where we are in the process. Um we are in August, so we have had the budget workshop, had the library and H workshop, set the tentative millage. The bills will be going out in a week or two. Tonight is the enterprise funds budget workshop. And then uh we will be setting the stormwater rates, or at least that'll be the first attempt to set a stormwater rate on August 24th at your regular council meeting. You must set the stormwater rates by September 15th, so that would leave you two meetings, the meeting of the 24th. And then if you don't come to a conclusion, if you need more information, um the September 14th meeting, we can add that. It's a it's a resolution. It only requires one meeting. On September 14th, we'll do the first reading of the budget, the millage and the C I P. And then on the 28th is the adoption hearing for all of the funds budgets.
Any questions?
So for tonight's agenda, we've got Stormwater Environmental Utility Fund. We'll do the budget summary, the three-year plan, capital projects, fund balance and talk about rates. For solid waste, it's a pretty simple fund. We'll do income statement, cash flow, talk about rates. Water and Sewer Fund, um we have an income statement, a cash flow statement, uh the rates, and we also have a um some capital projects. We'll talk about what's scheduled for 2021. You have in your in your budget draft, you have the full five-year uh plan, but you're only adopting year one, 2021. And I'll give you a quick, quick general fund update just as to where we are with the deficit and then we'll wrap up. As I said, on August 24th, you'll have your first attempt to set a stormwater rate for 21. And then we'll go forward to budget adoptions for the 14th and the and the 28th. Stormwater Utility Fund, we call it the Stormwater Fund, but it does have a longer formal name. This year on the budget summary, um as you saw, it draws down fund balance by $605,000. So the 960 per E R U does not cover all of the personnel operating and capital outlay scheduled. However, we'll talk about it. Has a pretty healthy fund balance right now, so um but over the three years that that will change. Every year we have to, it has been unchanged, the E R U rate since 2018, so it's $9.60 per E R U per month. Um and so a normal single-family residential is one E R U, so 960 a month. The maximum E R U and and that's the way the code says that you can set the E R U to cover all of your costs as well as reasonable reserves would be 1570 per month. So not that you're setting it there, but just to let you know you have between 960 and 1570 as um available rates.
Right.
Uh the staffing is unchanged, so there's four full-time positions. And just to give you an idea of those positions, it's a utilities foreman, an environmental specialist, an equipment operator known as our street sweeper. Um and then a lakes management coordinator. And those um account for about 14% of the funds operating, I mean funds total expenditures. So um the other portions are, of course, regular operating and capital outlay. So just to give you an idea of what operating expenditures in the Stormwater Fund are, the majority of it, 21% is drainage repair, and those are small drainage projects, so they're sort of ongoing curb and gutter issues. So they're they're your small drainage, not your large structural flooding type drainage professional services, and that is um not, that's that's combining both lake quality and engineering. So those will be designing some of those drainage projects, surveys, helping with many of the submittals that we have to send into D E P to make sure that our numbers are accurate on all of the facilities that we have throughout the city. We've got to report in on how they're operating. Aquatic weed treatment, which uh we've, that's gone up this year because we had those three um invasive species removals projects, and those will be ongoing maintenance. So we're spending a little more there this year than we have in past years, and that's Mini Ha Ha, um Lake Sebelia Point and um the community park. Then there is the administrative charge, that's about 10%, and what that is, is all of the assistance that's given to stormwater, that would be Public Works Director. The Fleet Department, I T Department, any of the time that they spend assisting with stormwater, that customer service and billing, that goes, um that gets allocated to that fund. Uh set by council about maybe 10 years ago or seven years ago was it's flat at 90,000. So even though we calculated it at $256,000 worth of value to the fund, only 90,000 is transferred back, so it's it's been 90 for for many years.
Yeah.
And then some of the smaller ones, chemicals, let water quality testing, liability insurance, lake spraying, uh utilities and solid wastes when the you know, the yard waste from the street sweeper has to get hauled away to the landfill. Um and then just other, so gas, oil, repair and maintenance materials and supplies. So that's what makes up the operating expenditures, which are 48% of the fund. And then capital expenditures are 38% of the fund. And for the year coming up, we've got $750,000 worth of capital expenditures. That's designing the um the relocation of the stormwater pipe um at Alvin and Gem Lake, which is basically by Peacock Ford there. And uh it's a failing system, so this would be redesigning it and then year one of two. So it's anticipated to be about a 1.2 million dollar project. So we're have funded over two years, so it'll be funded over 21 and then started in 22. And here's the three-year plan, and um over the three years, it, the fund will actually draw down fund balance. So that by year three, if we do not change the rate or if we do not um change the projects, the capital projects or the maintenance projects that we have in there, or study, there's various studies that are in there. The fund will dip into a deficit, so it will have expended all of its fund balance. And it did start 2020 with about 2.7 million. So this does assume that we spend all of that. That hasn't typically been the case. That some of that, some of that funds will will be unspent and will be returned to fund balance. But looking at the projects, there's about 630,000 that will get spent that's in there and broke that out, so you could see. Um and we'll go over those pro, what those projects are. Here's the rate history. So the rate uh was at $10.39 in 2017. It was taken down to 960 in 2018 and it's remained there for the last three years. So just to give you a sizing, you're not setting any rates tonight, but you know, the first time you'll see those, have to make a decision is the 24th of August. But each E R U, so $1 per E R U per month generates 11, almost $12,000 a month or $140,000 annually. So just to give you an idea, for every dollar that you add, that's what it brings into the fund annually.
To the E R U.
Yeah, per E R U. So if you were to go to 1060, it would mean another $140,000 each year to the fund. Here are the stormwater carry forwards. Uh we have a Winfield subdivision infrastructure, uh drainage for Greenwood Gardens, and that's just the design. That's not the actual project. You you probably saw the project is in the C O C I P in years, I think 23 and 24. It's a, it's a million-dollar project, but this is the balance of the design. And then a project at Thistle and Goldwater that is a flooding issue. It's anticipated to be about a half a million dollar project, so we will bring that to you. They're just in their final refinements of the engineering to make sure that there's no downstream issues with the project.
Yeah, that's a problem. That's been a problem for many years.
Yes.
That's the one I heard to pray?
No, it's it's over across from um Dahmerick Elementary. Thistle, Goldwater. But we don't, we want to make sure we don't solve one problem and create another downstream. So that's where we are on that one. And just to give you an idea that that was, you know, when we talked about fund balance, so that's that's where it's been historically in 1718. As you see, we started 19 with almost 2.7 million dollars. Anticipating at the end of fiscal 2020, we will still have $2 million and then you see it gets drawn down each year so that in 2023, there is no fund balance. This fund doesn't typically need a lot of fund balance. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't need to have great reserves. You probably just want to have 15%, you know, like 750,000 floor for like one issue, you know, where you'd have three or four months of revenue if something happened and we couldn't bill, but we still needed to survive. So it it doesn't need significant fund balance, but it certainly can't run into the red. So that's all I had on stormwater. I don't know if you want to talk about stormwater before I go on to solid waste?
Guys, y'all have any questions about this? This is uh.
Do it at the end. I'm fine either way.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's probably better to take them one at a time, Sharon, when we come through them. Uh I'm sure that uh we have folks that will uh, or at least one, that will uh want to see this rate go up to a a what he perceives as a fully funded rate. You know, so there's gonna be more of that discussion, I would expect.
On the 24th. Yeah, yeah. So on the 24th, I have another fun Excel spreadsheet that runs rate scenarios that you can run to see how it impacts a resident and how it impacts fund balance. And how many more projects can you get done? Again, it's not, 2020 is not, not, it's not going to eliminate fund balance in 2020. Still have more than 1.5 million, but I think it's something you need to be cognizant of that, you know, yeah, year three, you're, you won't have the flexibility to pull anything out of fund balance.
And I just want to uh state something. We, this is not three years ago. This is not two years ago. I mean, now we have Kim who's running the show over there. She knows exactly what needs to be done, how to, how to get it done. And um you can be guaranteed these will be completed. And we're not going to have extra money rolling over as we have in the past.
Uh there's something to be said for that Vance. I agree.
Well, Sharon, are are, we have 750,000 um. Looks like we have that through 2022.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So at the end of of 21, you still have over 1.5 million. In 22, you have 750,000. So it's not a decision that has to be made now. But it just gets more painful later if, you know, and again, so this assume projects get done and we are doing them differently. Doing feasibility first, then design, then construction, as opposed to design, find out we can't do it, you know? And we already budget for construction. So there's a method to how they're getting done that should get them done in a timely manner.
So we're basically excuse me, guys, um funded through 2022.
Yes.
Sufficial.
And again, that assumes perfect budgeting and, you know, there's always laps, you know, somebody leaves, there's, you know, there's always budgeting is not a perfect science. So this assumes every penny gets spent and every dime of revenue comes in.
And Councilman Thomas, and I think in the notes I saw that, I mean, if we did nothing and we kept that through 2022, then in 2023, we'd have to take it up to 11, to, just to accomplish the goals, we'd have to take it up to $11.50. And then the year following, we'd have to jump it up all the way to 1665. So I think we're really better off slowly um rolling up that hill than trying to jump over it.
Well, I I don't want to take people's money and just stick it in the bank and get uh get 0.8% interest on it, so um I'd ra, I'd rather take it as needed. So anyway, I guess we'll talk about that.
Yeah, we will.
Right, I think it it's easier to explain if projects are getting done. And so 2020, it doesn't have, you know, 2020 has enough fund balance. It can get the prod, you know, get the, fund all the projects that are on there. Um and then as things are getting done, it should be drawing down that fund balance.
So we're good through 2022.
Yes.
Okay. So if we raised more money before 22, we just be sticking it in the bank and having a bigger fund balance?
Well, I wouldn't say that because I did, you know, when Public Works, I would hope not. When Public Works turned in their original C I P, they wanted to do, you know, those projects over one year. And so to fit them into the model, I I made them in phases, so year one, year two. So it's difficult to do a 1.2 million dollar project in one year. So we're, we split them over two years, but they would prefer to do it, you know, it it pushed all of them out. But I think they're, I think it's a reasonable amount of projects to get done. And I don't want to overestimate the projects we can get done because that just needs to sit, money sitting in fund balance.
Right.
And like I said, this so this fund doesn't really typically require huge fund balance.
I just, in in the past, we've talked about this fund and basically we have a a capacity to do so many projects and spend so much money per year. And and based on that analysis, we we kind of have this amount of money that will, we set this amount of money that would last us five years. And if 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 that, if that dynamic has changed, then suddenly we have the capacity to spend a lot more money and go a lot more projects and and I guess we should, we should, we should talk about that. Other than that, it it looks like we're we're on course through 2022.
Okay. Yeah, so that'll be on the the 24th is the first discussion. And I said I could, I can bring a list of the projects and I can bring the rate scenarios if you're interested. Okay, on the solid waste fund. So this has a three-year plan, a statement of income. It is an enterprise fund, so it does look a little different than the other funds, a little more complicated. Up um income statement because we have to separate operating from non-operating from cash from non-cash, but ultimately, this is a very healthy fund. So even though there is a, um, let's see if I can. No, it's not letting me do it. Even though, oops, sorry. Didn't like what I just did. Even though there is a um a net loss for the year of 50, almost $51,000, that fund has 2.3 million dollars in it. And again, it's not a fund that typically needs, uh it doesn't have, it has one asset, it has a vehicle. So it's mostly contracted services, doesn't require a lot of fund balance, so it's not a problem. Um and I, and when you look at the cash flow, it's it's still positive cash and we can go into that, but it's pretty much revenues uh remain flat. They shouldn't be, but because of COVID, we saw a lot of reduced services on the commercial side. So they cut down the number of pickups they had. Um they're just not generating the same amount uh in terms of frequency. So we saw a lot of frequency cut, which reduced revenue. So even though it, you know, there are some more customers, they're just offsetting the slowdown in other customers, restaurants, commercial offices have all reduced their frequency. And in some cases, the size of the can. The expenditures also remain flat. There is a 1.32% increase based upon our agreement with Waste Pro, which is, as you can see, it's a change in the CPI and the change in the fuel prices. The change in the fuel prices was negative, so it actually reduced the CPI. So it's 1.32%, which we're able to absorb without increasing rates. We haven't increased rates since 2011. There, for the first time in a long time, Seminole County is increasing their landfill costs. It's a 3% increase. It's still less than Orange County. And we mentioned the 1.32% increase in the Waste Pro contract and a 2% increase in the administrative reimbursement to the general fund. So 74% of those expenditures directly relate to haulers and solid waste. And then the remainder is um materials and supplies, depreciation of the vehicle, the one vehicle and administrative expenses, and they do transfer money to the general fund. About 15% of those expenditures, it's called, you know, payment in lieu of franchise. So instead of paying a franchise fee, the the fund sends that back to the general fund as revenue. From the cash flow perspective, 2021 and 22 are all positive. If you remember, uh the Solid Waste Fund loaned money to the general fund to buy the doctor's office. And so it's getting principal payments back that will end in 22. So even though there's a small net loss, cash is still positive and cash is still increasing until we get to 2023. This, it's, it's uh reserves are about 10 months of expenditure, so it's not something to be concerned about. And it's one asset is a vehicle which can, it's not going to require any kind of repair that will hit fund balance.
We just need a new vehicle.
If we need, and it's, the vehicle's fine. It doesn't, you know what I mean? It's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um that's all I had for solid waste. It's actually a pretty simple one.
Anybody have any questions?
I just throw this out for brainstorming. Um so on Monday, um we have um our garbage out and our recycling and everybody's got it out. On Thursday, at least in my neighborhood, maybe one in three have a garbage can out. Um have we ever considered, and I know other cities and counties have, of going to one day a week?
So when, yeah, we put it out to bid with the, them having to bid it back to us both ways. So it saved about $4 a month to a resident to go down to once a week. And council debated that. I mean, they they talked about it. It's still an option. We can, we can switch back to that. You know, pricing, it's it's not, it's not a problem. Um I think some, Lake Mary, I believe, had gone there and then went back to twice a week. I think when it gets, when it gets ugly is when, around the holidays, when people have a lot of food waste or in the summer where people just don't want to keep it in their garage all weekend long or in their house all weekend long. So it is an option. weekend long or in their house all weekend long. So it is an option and, and the question is whether the four dollar four dollars is worth the inconvenience or the convenience to folks who want twice a week. Way back when, when I started, and Dale, you might remember this, you bought a sticker if you wanted your second day. So we only picked up the cans with the stickers and then that just got out of control. You know, it's just, we're too big now to, to be checking for stickers. Yeah, seeing if you had a sticker on.
I was just asking.
Yeah, we did. And again, it's like, is four dollars worth the inconvenience? And, and the other, some of the, you know, other sustainability goals is, well, you know, you'd be only running this truck, you'd be running this truck less, but actually where they've done it, they have to make more trips to the landfill back and forth because they fill the truck up faster. And so that they're, they're driving more, not in our neighborhoods, but in general, more mileage on the trucks. So certainly.
It's a wash emissions wise, huh?
Yeah. I mean, again, it's something, if, if we ever get in that position, you know, or if we ever, if there were ever like organic recycling where people were composting or there was something like that, then it, then it doesn't become an issue. Cause I think it's really the food waste that people don't want to have hanging around. Everything else could, you know, could wait.
So with that, were you foreseeing, um, any cost from now to twenty twenty-three? I know we have the, the one cost that we're incurring for, um, recycling, but do you see any other costs incurring?
Uh, in terms of, um, to the funds, you mean like?
Like for, uh, solid waste, where were you seeing more charges they would charge us for anything?
The, the only issue is what you brought up is recycling and it's going to depend on the market. Because our old, you know, under our old scenario, we got paid for recycling revenue. And under the new scenario, because we're single stream, they have to process it all together. So it all goes together and has to be sorted whether there's a market for it or not. So the processing fees many times are, um, more than any market revenue they get. If we, if there is revenue, we get it. It's just that, you know, I understand, we talked about aluminum and cardboard still have a market, but glass, you know, paper has no market. So it's just depending and they're offsetting each other. So that's the only cost in that three-year plan. That's the only cost. Other than that, it's just CPI increases which are capped at four percent for our contract.
Yeah.
And this assumes no rating, this assumes we don't increase resident rates.
Right. So we could go up four percent every year for the next three years. It is, is a possibility.
Yes. I put in there two and a half because that's more likely given, you know, given where the economy is. I think the, you know, if you saw the CPI, actually the fuel prices were negative this year.
Yeah.
So. But yeah, max is four percent. I put in two and a half as, as you know, average.
These are good questions. Yeah, we're gonna deal with, uh, deal with dirty recycling as well. So.
Yes. And that's an education. In fact, Vance and I talked about that earlier and that's an education piece because um, there is, there are things we can do. We can start opening people's recycling bins and auditing, you know, just seeing where we have problems.
Well, it's just cardboard and aluminum. I mean, I've the, the, um, my wife, I, she, you know, she does this like everyone else. When in doubt, you throw it in the recycling bin and, and probably the reverse of that is true.
Yes. Well, yeah, I mean.
You know, if it's not, if it's not aluminum or cardboard, then it, it, you know, if it's a a magazine or mail or, you know, paper or whatever, it, it probably doesn't belong in there. And in fact, I've, I've read where they'll just toss the whole thing at the recycling bin because it's contaminated with too much stuff they don't need.
Yeah. And they don't consider like magazines contamination. And you would still rather send magazines to the plant because even if there's not a market and they have to give it away, they have to process it and give it away. At least it doesn't end up in the landfill. So I think the, I think what we're seeing is people are throwing just beyond like either trash, straight up trash in there, uh, yard waste. I mean, they will take a certain amount of contamination. They understand that that comes with, you know what I mean? That in, um, contamination is mostly food or, I mean, I think we've seen, I don't know if you've seen the pictures, but like a hose, you know, hose is not recyclable, but.
So I went, uh, the other day and had some documents, um, chopped up over off Douglas Avenue. And I was talking to the guy and I paid, you know, two boxes. I think I paid forty dollars to get the documents um, shredded. And he then told me that he sells that shredded paper off to, uh, Georgia Pacific. And they make it into products for Publix. So he's getting, he's getting the double whammy. I paid him and they pay him.
Right. And that.
There is a call for some paper.
Right. Completely a hundred percent clean paper. They don't want to have to deal with our paper. So they want, they, they will accept paper, but it's not the come, the kind that comes in single stream. You know, like that is pristine paper. That is paper that is not mixed with anything. There's no food in there, you know? They don't have to clean it. So they, what used to happen is it would go to China and they would accept it contaminated and and deal with it. But the, the mills here have never accepted a, a, a level of contamination that single stream represents because it just does, you know? Juice gets on the paper, you know, it's just.
Yeah, yeah. We've, and we've made it that single stream and people don't want to go back to that double double little carriers where you got glass and plastic in one and then paper in the other.
Yeah. Seminole County has remained single stream. I mean, uh, dual stream. They are not, have no intention of going to single stream for that reason.
And they're sorting them at the truck when they're picking them up.
Yes. And that, that helps with the marketability, but it, it is a step backwards in terms of, you know, quantities of recycling because there's a little more work involved in separating it.
All right. Any more thoughts?
Yeah, I had, I had one. Sharon, um, back to the stormwater. I know about, was it, how long, or maybe this is for Mark. Um, how long ago was it we purchased that new street sweeper?
I think it was just last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was last year.
Yeah.
And they usually have a five-year shelf life to them? Is that right?
Yes, yes.
So we'd be all right till twenty twenty-three. We wouldn't have, uh, that purchase in there then, just the maintenance of the street sweeper we have.
There is a vehicle in twenty twenty-three, but for some reason I think it's the Vector truck.
Then twenty twenty-four, we would get the street sweeper.
Right.
Thank you.
Good question. Anybody else? Or do we want to move on to water and sewer? Go ahead, Ms. Sharon.
Okay. So water and sewer is also an enterprise fund. And so we set our rates to cover all of the expenditures and build a reserve for repair and maintenance. And for the three-year plan, in all three years, as you see, the bottom line is, um, positive operating income. We also have positive net income each of those years. But as you can see, it drops down in twenty-two and twenty-three slightly. And that's because debt service kicks in. So if you look at the first line, you see debt service going up on those SRF loans. And then the, the net income will go down and, and get, again, we're, we're trying to break even and have a reasonable reserve. But we do need to keep, uh, debt service in mind as these large projects come on. So that's what we have there. In terms of rates, the code spells out an annual CPI increase and the, it's a one point seven nine percent, which is a dollar thirty-eight a month to the average customer's bill. We are start, currently conducting a rate study. It's been a while to, um, ensure, we had a, I think it's been almost seven years now to ensure that the fund continues to remain in compliance with debt service in the future. And also is able to maintain the infrastructure. So we don't want to end up where we were with old infrastructure that, you know, requires a lot of maintenance all at the same time.
All at the same time.
All at the same time. Yeah. Deferred maintenance, I guess we can call it. And, you know, again, these are upgrades. So when, when the lift station is upgraded from a, from the can situation that it is to a submersible, you don't, you're not going to be doing that again. You're, but you want to be maintaining them and maintaining the box. So from a cash flow perspective, all, uh, three plan years are positive. As you go through them, that assumes utility loan proof proceeds and a significant capital outlay. If you look, um, about halfway through, you'll see the capital outlay that goes out and then the utility loans that come in to pay for those. But still positive cash, um, even at the end of, you know, year three. But there are more projects, the projects don't end in twenty twenty-three.
No, they don't.
No. And the five-year plan is i- in the document that you have, but just going over what you're only adopting, you're only adopting a one-year budget. So for twenty twenty-one, it is lift station one, completing that project. Um, it, three million is shown in here. There's another million from, uh, South Seminole, North Orange County wastewater transmission authority or snuck water as we like to refer to it. And then an upgrade to lift station forty-two, which is behind Publix there and our old, kind of in our old public works building used to be across from Montessori school. And that is the downtown master lift station. So that'll be a bypass pump into and close it because it's, it's pretty visible where it is. And then on the water side, as you know, you approved phase one, which is the north seventeen ninety-two water uh, main upgrade. And this is to finish that and go south. Upgrading those to twelve inch line and that's about three million dollars estimated. Uh, there is also some savings, I believe, from these, this year's projects that will roll forward into that. Uh, water pump rehab, looking at a high service pump evaluation. And then we will need an additional ground storage tank. So that'll be designed in twenty twenty-one and built in twenty twenty-two. And that, that's a capacity issue. Any questions on any other water?
Anybody have any question? Sharon, quick question. Have we had any more prizes with, uh, uh, acquiring easements along seventy ninety-two?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, okay. If there's no questions on that, then just to give you a quick general fund update. So we've been working, um, this is from the millage rate that the budget was prepared with, not where you set it. You set it at four point five three five three. This is four point three four five three. So we were six hundred and eight thousand out. We are now four hundred and forty-seven thousand out and still working on that. And so when, at, at your next meeting, I'll give you another update as to where we are and a list of the projects. And I know, you know, for you to, to digest so that that list could be prioritized. Look, I will give it my best bet to pri- my best attempt to prioritize it. Obviously those are policy decisions for you all to do. And then as we can either, you can, if you set it higher, then you can pull some of those projects in. If you don't set it higher and you leave it at the current millage rate, if those state revenues start coming in better than expect, expected, then you pull those projects in, in that order that you prioritize them. So if we, if we got another two hundred thousand in sales tax, we could come back and say, we have two hundred thousand dollars. We're able to do the wayfinding because that was the first thing on your list, you know, or Hill Rec or whatever those priorities would be. So hopefully that's a way of, you know, kind of putting those projects on hold, but not eliminating those. We're not eliminating those projects. We're putting them on hold. And then seeing what the economy brings forward.
And we'll know more then.
Yes. But I think that's a way that, that they're not off the plate, that they don't disappear. Um, and that you, you, you could bring those pro- if those proj- products are a priority, then we bring them back. And there are two sidewalk projects on there. There are some things I, I think you would prioritize above other things. If, if, again, if one-time money comes in, sidewalks are a one-time expenditure. They're not an ongoing cost. So.
But there's got to be a lot of money coming in.
Well, the state came out with numbers that were higher than what we had, but we're keeping our numbers.
Right. I agree. I agree. Uh, any other questions in this regard? All right, uh, Sharon, is there, uh, you know, that, uh, you want to get into some, any miscellaneous funds budget stuff or?
I mean, we've pretty much covered them all, the general fund workshop. And I, I will send the CRA draft budget out to our CRA board member and then answer any of her questions. Again, it's, it's very make your debt service payment, pay back the loans, you know, a little bit of legal fees. So you know, I don't think it's going to be an issue in September to adopt that budget.
Yeah. Very good. Want to thank everybody for, uh, making it on, uh, Saturday. That was a, uh, you know, a, a treat to have the opportunity to see a project finished and be as well received as it is. So because all I've ever heard have been compliments on the trail and the opportunities it presents for everybody. So thanks.
It's just good seeing everybody. And, and I think one of the lessons in that, Dale, I think we've talked about it before is that whatever we do, there's going to be a handful of people getting mad about it. And, and sometimes in the past, they've let those handful of people stop them. And, um, I, I think we've seen from Tuscaloosa, which allowed two or three people to hold up that sidewalk for years. And that would have happened here. Sometimes you, you just have to accept that a couple of people are going to get mad and move forward with it. So.
Well, I think we're the group that stands what the right thing to do is. And, uh, so again.
Let me, let me share with you. I'm on, uh, the Facebook site. We had eighty-three likes on, uh, Robert's post on Facebook. And I think we had eight comments, all of them positive, and three people shared that information with their friends. So, yeah, there's a lot of happy people out there about it. So a lot of people do like it.
Well, yes, we were setting up the ribbon there and that couple walked, walked past. You know, couldn't give us enough gushy stuff about it. They walk it every day. And, uh, so again, we all know it's an example of doing a right thing for a right reason. So. All right. Any other thoughts? Any other comments that?
Mayor, just wanted to, uh, I know Maria reached out to everybody. So we are canceling Friday's workshop and moving it to next Wednesday. And then, uh, the only other issue was Monday night. Do you, are we doing it Zoom, I'm assuming?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure.
Um, again, I appreciate the rescheduling of the, uh, works, works, uh, workshop on Friday. I am unavoidably going to be in Ocala at my father's viewing. And, uh, unavoidable. So I appreciate the indulgence. Uh, anything else? All right. Well, consider the gabble banged. Done, guys. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Good night.